Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Agora Hills City Council meeting. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices. If you wish to speak or submit a written comment, please complete a comment card for each item and submit to the city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the item. I'm now calling this meeting to order. We begin with our land acknowledgement. The city of Agora Hills acknowledges that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and cared for by the Chumash Nation. Descendants of Chumash still remain, and we honor and pay our respects to their elders and various groups that make up the past, present, and emerging as they continue their stewardship of our lands and waters. We have a responsibility and commitment to elevate the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of the city of Agora Hills, and we are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. I will now defer to Boy Scout Troop 127 for the pledge of allegiance.
Color guard, advance. Audience, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under guard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard, prepare to post the colors. Two. Color guard dismissed. Audience at ease.
Thank you so much. That was lovely. I will now defer to our city clerk for the roll call.
Thank you. Good evening. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Anstead?
Here.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Wolf?
Here.
Mayor Sylvester?
Here.
Mayor Sylvester, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I will now defer to the city attorney for the report of the closed session.
Thank you, mayor. Direction is given to staff. No reportable action is taken this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're now moving on to the approval of the agenda. I would like to request a change order to move the introduction of the new Lost Hills Sheriff's Station captain immediately following the approval of the agenda. Will the maker of the motion and the second approve the agenda as amended? State your names.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Deborah Klein Lopez?
City Councilwoman Chrissy Anstead, seconds.
Thank you. May I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval. Five to zero.
Thank you. I would now like to welcome our new sheriff's captain, Dustin Carr, to join us at the podium.
Make sure it works. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for having me tonight and hosting me out of order. I appreciate that. It's a busy day today, but I just wanted to say thank you very much. I am truly humbled to be here. As we all know, this is a dream command. I know there's a lot of natural disasters and challenges, but this is like the highlight of any, anyone's career to command a station like this, and I truly mean that. I started out my career with my first ride-along as an applicant at Malibu Lost Hills Station. At the, you know, I've worked in Agora Hills some twenty-odd years ago, and I've always loved this place. I've always loved this city. I've been your operations lieutenant the past three years, and I've been at Malibu Lost Hills Station as lieutenant for four years. So, I promised to be brief, but I just wanted to give my heartfelt thank you. I've gotten the chance to meet most everybody, and if I haven't met you, I want to meet you in the future. You know, reach out. We will set up a time and date to meet. But I've gotten to meet some of you, and truly, it's just, this whole valley is just full of wonderful people. And again, I wanted to say thank you. You've got a first-class city management team, you know, and every, every time I walk in to your city hall, everybody's so happy to be here. So, I mean, that's just really a testament to Agora Hills. Everybody you meet on the street is happy to be here, happy to live here. So, I mean, like I said, it's a dream command. So, I wanted to thank you again, and if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer any.
Thank you so much and welcome. Would anybody have any questions or comments? No? Okay, so I actually have something, and I apologize.
No.
Because it's a complaint.
Oh. Let me get my pen out.
Last night, I received an email from one of our residents talking about the e-bike epidemic, as he calls it, and he says, "It's only getting worse. Kids on these high-speed e-bikes clearly feel emboldened by the apparent lack of substantive action to rein these kids and their dangerous e-bikes." He and his wife were walking along Razor Doby Road. This kid had already buzzed them once. He buzzed them again and said, I won't say the words, but an expletive, "What are you going to do?" This is what the kid said to the adults. And then he passed them again, buzzed them again, and said, "What are you going to do about it?" Blank. You can fill in. So, I know we've already talked to you about it. We've talked to the school district. They've sent out messages. I know the J-Team has visited the school sites. I know when I was at the concert in the park a couple of weeks ago, two sheriff's deputies came with me, and we spoke to a group of boys that were riding their e-bikes in the park, which is not allowed. So, residents, no bikes of any kind are allowed to be ridden inside the parks. What else can we do with these kids that are, you know, riding three abreast down Thousand Oaks Boulevard doing wheelies?
So, I mean, really enforcement is key. You have a very good motor deputy here, Carl, or, yeah, Carl Forbes. He is our, he goes by Justin. I'm sorry. He's gonna, he's gonna kick me if he hears I just called him Carl. But you have a really, really, he, and I have seen him, because I've taken the complaints and read the complaints about him towing the vehicles. We've done J-Team operations where we have, you know, taken the e-bikes and impounded them. Yes, they're not allowed to be on the streets. So, enforcement's going to be key on that. This, you know, in our jurisdiction, several of the cities are suffering this. We even were able, with the help of the city, squash a whole e-bike event that was supposed to occur here. So, it's proactiveness, it's enforcement, and we can continue to run operations. But this is really, the e-bike, I guess we call it epidemic, or, you know, for lack of a better term, is spreading across a lot of jurisdictions, not just mine, but other city councils. This is item number one on their scope as far as a law enforcement issue. So, we can have meetings with my traffic sergeant, Jim Erins, and we can definitely start trying to think outside the box of how we're going to handle this. A lot of it has to do with enforcement at the high school. A lot of it's our juveniles, you know, they found a quick way to get around town, and they're not allowed to be on those bikes. There are certain parameters. A lot of those bikes, you have to have licenses to ride. If they go over a certain speed, you have to have an actual motorcycle license to ride those. So, I do hear your concerns. Lost Hills Station hears you, and we will continue to work on it. You know, one of the promises I always make is we're going to be responsive. So, I will get with my traffic sergeant. We will come up with some kind of solutions. If it's more operations, then it's more operations. I think a lot of it, too, is our social media. When we do these operations, I, we're going to try and be more visible. We've started a social media team 24 hours, so when we impound them, kids watch social media. They're glued to it. So, if they see us towing these, these, these e-bikes, you know, that will also be a deterrent, because when you tow it, it's kind of hard to get them out after that. So, and it's very, it gets, you know, tow fees add up pretty quick. So, if it's over two months, it's probably over the value of the bike even. So, yes, I hear that complaint. That is a valid, logical complaint, and I understand it. And I'm sorry that the youth was so rude to one of your constituents, because that's totally inappropriate, so.
Thank you. So, I hope, I hope you're listening, that we are trying to respond. So, thank you so much.
My pleasure. Any other questions or concerns? Okay. Well, I hope to appear before you again in the near future. My goal is to, at least once a quarter, just give you an update about what's going on at our patrol station. So, I will always coordinate that with Mr. Hamburger, your city manager, to make sure that, you know, I'm here in a timely, timely manner and a scheduled manner, so you know I'm here. So, that way, you have a chance to, any questions or anything you'd like addressed, I'll be able to do so at that time.
And we're really looking forward to having your deputy in our Razor Doby Parade.
Oh, yes. We, oh, Darcy, yes. She will be there, and I will be there. I forgot to tell you that. Thank you for reminding me. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming. All right. So, now we are moving on to the, my favorite part, business of the month. I'm going to move over to the other microphone. Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. So, our September business of the month is Minu's boutique. For the month September, I'm so proud to recognize Minu and her boutique. Minu has an inspiring story. Originally from Iran, Minu brought her vision and passion for fashion to our community, launching her boutique right here in Agora Hills, and I believe it was over twenty-five years ago. Am I correct? Yes. Sorry? Thirty-seven? Oh, my goodness! Thirty-seven years! She has created something truly special, a store that offers a wide variety of clothing, from casual, everyday pieces to stunning evening gowns, all thoughtfully curated from around the world. Every item in her boutique is chosen with care, reflecting Minu's eye for detail, quality, and unique style. She makes sure her clients don't just find clothes, they find looks that make them feel confident, elegant, and beautiful. And I am wearing one of her tops right now, so, and I feel extremely confident, so thank you, Minu. Let me tell you, if you haven't stepped into Minu's boutique, you are missing out. The store itself is absolutely gorgeous, and the experience is warm and welcoming. In fact, I recently had the chance to visit, and we had a lot of fun making some videos. I hope you've all read, all been looking at Instagram today, because I'm up there modeling all sorts of outfits. So, thank you so much, Minu, and you helped me when I was walking the red carpet for the Oscars. So, you made me feel really good. We are so lucky to have a business like yours in our city, one that brings creativity, culture, and personal connection to our residents and visitors. Minu's boutique is a true reflection of the entrepreneurial spirit that makes Agora Hills shine. Minu, would you like to join me? And I will give you this presentation? Or shall I come to, if I go up there, the cameras won't capture it, will they? If I walk to Minu? Will it? Okay, just, just, just to hear. That would be lovely.
Thank you.
So, Minu, would you like to say something?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank our wonderful mayor, that she's trying so hard to promote all the small businesses in Agora. That's wonderful. And everyone who helps her and work with her. Second of all, I want to ask all the wonderful ladies that for the past thirty-seven years have supported me, they're not here, but I'm sure they will hear me, whether they're still my customers or not, but I will always, always appreciate that. A lot of them are still my friends, and they support me. So, I thank you, everyone. I am really excited. I'm gonna frame this and put it in the show. And show it off. Thank you, Penny. Thank you.
We're gonna get a picture. Over, oh, we have to come over here. Do you want your family to join you?
My friends, yes.
Your, your friends? Would you like to join us? No? No? Come on up. Thank you, Minu. Thank you for coming. Have a lovely evening. And now, we're going to celebrate a birthday. Yesterday was California's 175th anniversary of statehood. So, we've issued a beautiful proclamation. I hope you can all see it. I hope the camera can see it, which I'm going to read. Whereas, on September the ninth, eighteen fifty, California was admitted to the Union as the thirty-first state, becoming a vital part of the United States and a beacon of opportunity, innovation, and diversity. And whereas, over the past one hundred and seventy-five years, California has grown remarkably, emerging as a global leader in culture, technology, agriculture, and environmental stewardship, with a population representing every corner of the world. And whereas, California's cultural diversity is one of its greatest strengths, as generations of people from varied backgrounds, traditions, and experiences have come together to shape the state's unique identity and contribute to its vibrant and inclusive society. And whereas, California's rich and complex history, from its Native American heritage and the Gold Rush era, to the birth of the film industry, the rise of Silicon Valley, and its leadership in social and environmental justice, has profoundly influenced and shaped the history and progress of our nation. And whereas, the success of California has been built by people and communities across the strait, the state, from rural towns to bustling urban centers, whose hard work, ingenuity, and perseverance have helped build a diverse and dynamic economy, now recognized as the fourth-largest economy in the world. And whereas, home to more than thirty-nine million residents, California is the most populous state in the nation and a premier travel destination, famous for its natural beauty, cultural landmarks, and iconic attractions, including the largest wildlife crossing bridge in the world. And it draws millions of visitors every year. And whereas, Californians have long exemplified resilience, creativity, and determination in the face of adversity, whether through natural disasters, economic hardships, or social movements, continuously driving the state towards a more inclusive, just, and sustainable future. And whereas, looking ahead, California continues to lead with bold innovation, strategic investment, and forward-thinking policies promoting environmental responsibility, educational opportunity, public health, and civic engagement, serving as a model and inspiration for other states and nations. Now therefore, I, Penny Sylvester, mayor of the city of Agora Hills, on behalf of the entire Agora Hills City Council, do hereby proclaim September ninth, twenty twenty-five to be California's 175th anniversary of statehood day, and encourage all Californians to celebrate our state's remarkable history, honor its diverse legacy, and look forward to a bright and promising future ahead. Together, let us reflect on California's journey and reaffirm our commitment to the values that make our state truly exceptional. And now, we also have another proclamation, and I'm going to call on Louis Selaya to help me with this one, since I've done all the reading so far. So, this is National Preparedness Month. Louis, take it away.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Sylvester. So, yes, this is, September is National Preparedness Month, and we have a proclamation here acknowledging that, and I will read that. So, it says, "Whereas emergencies and disasters can strike at any time, often without warning, and can have devastating impacts on individuals, families, homes, businesses, infrastructure, and communities. And whereas, the consequences of such events can be mitigated through the advanced planning, awareness, and collective action, making preparedness a vital component of public safety and community resi, community resilience. And whereas, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, through its Ready Campaign, has designated each September since two thousand, two thousand and four as National Preparedness Month, encouraging..." since 2000, to 2004 as National Preparedness Month, encouraging all Americans to take proactive steps to prepare for emergencies, and whereas the theme of the 2025 campaign, Preparedness Starts at Home, highlights the importance of returning to preparedness fundamentals, knowing potential local hazards, developing emergency plans, building emergency supply kits, and staying informed, while also promoting civic engagement and neighborhood readiness, and whereas research consistently shows that even small preparedness actions, such as gathering important documents, creating communication plans, and participating in local emergency training can significantly reduce the adverse impacts of disasters, saving lives, minimizing injuries, and speeding, speeding recovery. And whereas, the City of Agora Hills recognizes the critical importance of preparedness, and in partnership with public safety agencies, educational institutions, and community organizations, will launch a comprehensive outreach campaign during the month of September to provide residents with resources, training opportunities, and practical tips on how to become disaster-ready. And whereas, community preparedness is a shared responsibility, and by working together to plan ahead, build emergency kits, and participate in programs like the Community Emergency Response Team, residents can help protect not only their families, but also their neighborhoods and community as a whole. Whereas, by empowering residents with the knowledge and resources and fostering a spirit of collaboration, the City of Agora Hills aims to create a safer, more informed, and resilient community that is better prepared to withstand and recover from any emergency or disaster. I'm going to let you read the last part.
Okay, I'll give you back your glasses. Now therefore I, Penny Sylvester, Mayor of the City of Agora Hills, on behalf of the entire Agora Hills City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2025 to be National Preparedness Month in the City of Agora Hills, and urge all residents, families, businesses, schools, and organizations to take proactive steps to prepare for emergencies, including creating a personalized emergency plan, building on emergency supply kits, staying informed, and engaging in local preparedness efforts. And remember, when you're building those kits, don't forget your pets. Thank you so much. A lot of speaking for one night. All right. So now, we are moving on to Intergovernmental Special Purpose Committee and Departmental Reports, and I would like to call on Councilmember Klein Lopez for the Clean Power Alliance report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did have a board meeting, uh, last week, and I'm excited to report that we are actually going to be buying more power from the San, Sanzilla Wind Project in New Mexico, which, if you haven't heard, is the largest wind farm in the entire Western Hemisphere. Uh, it's coming online soon, and Clean Power Alliance is the largest off-taker, and so it's a huge complement to our, a lot of the solar that we have in California, this is wind that, you know, blows all night, and so it's a fantastic, uh, complement for reliability. The other exciting news is we are offering membership to two new cities. Hopefully it will, it will pan out to, uh, Cudahy in Los Angeles County and Fillmore in Ventura County. And like Agora Hills, when we joined, there, there are a few hurdles at the local level, on the city level, that, um, they, you know, they have to jump through, and then also at the CPUC level. So it's, nothing is a done deal, but it's looking very positive, and, you know, that would put us up to 40, uh, 40 entities, which is a very, very big number. Uh, and as Chair of the Board, it's a lot of cats to wrangle. Uh, and then finally, we have our board retreat at the end of this month, which I'm very excited about, with, with that many people, with that many, uh, cities. We meet in five different locations downtown, out here in the, um, in Calabasas. So every month when we meet, we have five locations, so we're not together as a whole board very often, and so it's a fantastic day where we're all actually in person together, so looking forward to that. And I'll report back on all that next month, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any reports from staff? Seeing none? Are there any reports from City Council? No? Seeing none? Okay. We're now moving on to public comments. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items that are not listed on the agenda, that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. If you have something to distribute to the City Council, please do not approach the dais. Hand your item to the City Clerk and she will distribute to us on your behalf. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the City Council shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to the City Clerk.
Thank you. We did not receive any written correspondence. We do have one speaker card, Ben Suber.
Welcome, Ben.
Well, good evening, Mayor Sylvester, City Manager Hamburger, City Council, and staff. First things first, I know today has been a rather sobering day, but at the same time too, studies have shown that community service is a big, big turnaround, and oh, do I have an opportunity coming up on, yes, Saturday, Saturday, Saturday! The Creek Cleanup is coming up this Saturday at the southwest corner of Canaan and Agora. From 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon, we will be tackling the Lendero and Medea, Medea Creeks, clearing out the trash that has accumulated in the last year, and there's always a treasure that is to be found. We have found a surfboard. We have found, we have found a paddle boat. That was last year. And also, we have found a wood carved beaver, and of course, all the other usual trash, and you might even find monster truck parts. Who knows what you will find? But we will all find out together at the Creek Cleanup this Saturday at, at 9:00 AM at the southwest corner of Canaan and Agora. Whether you come for an hour, whether you come for two, whether you want to come for all three, or be an overachiever, we welcome it all. So once again, we want you. We've got 80 strong signed up, 78, but still 80 is the difference, so we want you to sign up. So don't be shy, come join us, it's a blast, and I hope to see you this Saturday at the Creek Cleanup. And once again, scan me.
Thank you so much, Ben. That was wonderful. I look forward to seeing you there on Saturday. Do we have any other speakers?
We do not.
All right, thank you. So, yes. We now move on to the consent calendar. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar. I'll defer to the City Clerk.
Thank you. We did not receive any written correspondence, nor do we have any speaker cards.
Thank you. Are there any questions from City Council on the consent calendar? No? Seeing none, I will now call for a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar.
Councilmember Anderson moves to adopt the consent calendar.
Mayor Pro Tim Wolf, I will second.
I will defer to the City Clerk for the roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Council Staff Comments. Are there any comments from staff?
Thank you, Mayor Sylvester. Good evening, City Council. We are not going to see each other, believe it or not, before Reyes Adobe Days, so I just wanted to pause and take a moment and remind people to visit the website, reyesadobe days dot org, or dot gov, will get you either, either way. And we are still, you can still join, as you, if you look on the screen, you can still sign up to be a volunteer, you can get your Night at the Adobe ticket, you can even join the parade, Rad Run, Rad Ride, we are taking all signups. We're really excited, as we mentioned at our last, or a couple council meetings ago, that we've got a great entertainment lineup with Tiny Porch Concerts, Malibu Brewing Company's going to be out all weekend pouring beer, um, we've got a, a robust parade already, and you can see, we met Captain Car tonight, um, Chaplain Reeves and Deputy Darcy, we could only see her little head there on the screen below him, that's our grand marshal, we're so excited to have him. Um, most people know him, he's actually an entertainer, an actor by trade, um, and has been at the Lost Hill Sheriff Station for a few years as their chaplain, so he's amazing, he's lovely to be with, so we're excited to see him. And then one of our newer things, which we didn't mention at the, uh, council meeting a couple of weeks ago, was that we're going to be introducing some Reyes Adobe Days merchandise this year, so we're really excited about that. Um, we're going to have T-shirts and mugs and tote bags and stickers, so we're hoping that you'll come visit the Rabbit and Oaks Mercantile at the event. So thank you to all of our sponsors for being out there. I do want to take a moment, though, and thank the City Council for your support and recognizing how important this event is to our community. People love it. We've already got, you know, several, a couple hundred people signed up to volunteer, people are waiting to buy their tickets for everything, they really love Reyes Adobe Days. And then I also need to give a really big shout out to the staff. Um, first and foremost, our City Manager Hamburger, always super supportive, never turns an eye when I come up with some crazy idea of what we want to do with Reyes Adobe Days, so thank you to Nate. And then every department represented here tonight has had a hand in this event, community development, finance, public work, city manager, city clerk, everybody puts a hand in it, and it literally takes a village to put this party on for the village. So I want to publicly say thank you to all of our city staff, too. You'll see them out there with our blue shirts, um, so feel free to stop by and say hi, but we're ready, we're excited, and we can't wait for it. So visit the website and sign up. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, and you didn't mention the Fiesta, is it sold out?
Mayor Sylvester, you're so supportive of that Fiesta. It is not sold out, and you're right, it is the Thursday, September 24th, and you can get your tickets online. If you go to the website, the first button up on the top left is Rad Fiesta, you just click there, and then it'll tell you to buy your ticket online.
I've got mine already.
Good. Love it, love it. We've got some great entertainment, lots of fun things planned, Sochi and Melanie are going to have a great, a great day, so.
Great. And I would also like to add, when you were talking about the Reyes Adobe Day, um, merchandise, I saw, I attended the CAC meeting this week, and I saw your drawings of what they're going to be selling, and I'm putting in my orders for that, too.
You already did, I love that, yes.
Thank you so much. Are there any other staff comments? No? All right. Comments from City Council? Deborah Klein Lopez.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to personally, uh, touch on something that, uh, Ben Suber mentioned, which was that today's a very sobering day in terms of gun violence that we are seeing. Uh, just want to say that I think it's very clear that gun violence does not see red or blue, it doesn't see age, it doesn't see gender, it doesn't see religion, and in recent news cycles, we've seen some pretty horrific incidents, um, political violence with the murder of a state legislator and her family in Minnesota, we saw children, um, gunned down at a school in, at a church, and today, a very horrific and apparently graphic, uh, shooting of, uh, and killing of Charlie Kirk. I've not been able to see this terrible video that I know is going around, it's just too, too upsetting, and so, um, you know, it's, it's just horrific. I just want to reiterate that gun violence is out of control in this country, and that I hope we can all come together to condemn and address this gun violence that is so pervasive in our country, and not continue to accept this as a new normal. Um, send my, uh, personal condolences to the family of Charlie Kirk, and hope that we can use this moment to, to address the violence. Thank you.
Thank you, very well said. Anybody else have any? Yes, Councilmember Brownstead.
Um, unfortunately, I don't, um, uh, want to bring up things that are, uh, are not fun to talk about, but one of the things that we do need to remember is September 11th is tomorrow. And, uh, 24 years since September 11th, and I think most of us are, all of us can remember where we were on September 11th, 2001, and, uh, and the tragedy that ensued was one of the biggest attacks on this country, and, uh, affected thousands of, of lives. And, uh, so I, I just wanted to take a moment of silence to recognize all the victims of, of 9/11. It's something we always said, never forget, and I think that's why we'd like to take a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Would you like to report about what we did this morning?
It's hard to follow. Thank you, uh, council members for bringing, uh, those important items up. Uh, this morning, um, Mayor Sylvester, myself, uh, and Councilmember Anstead, uh, Anstead and Klein Lopez attended the Waste Management RNG, Renewable Natural Gas, uh, Facility. It's the first of its kind in California, and it's in, it was in Simi Valley at the landfill, and what it's doing is turning methane into natural gas, putting it right into the pipeline. And some of the statistics we learned is that it's collecting the methane from the landfill, um, and it, it, it equals 2,000, uh, trash truck trips a day that's taking off the road, and it can power the estimated 60,000 homes a year, um, through collecting this methane. And it was really interesting to learn about the partnership between, uh, different government agencies to make this happen, and something that was said was that it, they're taking yesterday's trash and turning it into tomorrow's energy, and I thought that was really unique, and it's an exciting project that's bringing, um, our trash full circle. So it was really interesting to learn about that. And that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything, Councilmember?
Well, actually, um, I'll echo another thing that Ben Suber said, which is, community is the antidote to violence, and it's one of the things that I really value about the community of Agora Hills. I mean, Amy, the statistics that you have around how many people are excited about Reyes Adobe, I forget which Surgeon General said that isolation is a public health crisis, it is more dangerous than smoking, and so what we do here in Agora Hills in building community matters, and I'm grateful.
Thank you. Um, and I would just like to conclude to let the community know that the Board of, California Board of Forestry and Fire Protection, their Zero, Zone Zero Regulatory Advisory Committee will be meeting on September the 18th at 10:30 AM at the Altadena Community Center. It is open to the public, and if any of you would like to attend, please go to the Board of Forestry website, and you have to sign up to attend because it's a small community center, and I know there are a lot of us that are going to be going there to discuss the regulations and, you know, the changes that we would like to see before this is put into law. So please remember, Altadena, September 18th, 10:30 AM, Board of Forestry website. Thank you. And on that note, um, if there's no, nothing else? Good. The regular meeting of September the 24th, 2025 has been canceled. On August the 27th, 2025, the City Council approved the cancellation of the October 8th, 2025 meeting, and scheduled an adjourned regular meeting for Tuesday, October the 7th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers of the Civic Center located at 30001 Lady Face Court, Agora Hills, California. We look forward to seeing you all on October the 7th, which is a Tuesday night. This meeting is now adjourned, and would you like to adjourn in memory of the victims of September, the 9/11? Yes. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone.